All right. Good evening, everyone. I will call the Groton Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting to order. Again, good evening. It is five thirty-three on Tuesday, January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. I believe our first Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting of the new year. So, uh, wishing everyone a happy new year, of course. And, um, any, um, any announcements, um, or communication from committee members? Uh, councillor Westerville?
Um, no, I haven't gotten anything. Thank you.
And councillor McBride?
No, nothing other than the emails that we've all received.
Excellent. And I have nothing to report as well. Um, um, Clerk McCauser, do you have any updates or anything you'd like to share with the committee?
Well, you do have someone, uh, with the, uh, on the meeting and a phone number, eight-six-zero-nine-one-seven. I can't quite see it, five-two. I don't know who that is. Let's see if we can get them to talk. Can, can, uh, can the caller identify themselves, please?
Perhaps in the chat.
That's David.
Oh, that's David on phone, too?
Yeah, I can't, I can't hear him. The speaker.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay. There we go. Okay, so otherwise, uh, for updates, um, no, we don't have any real big updates, except the town council, the town committee did, um, like, the Democratic Town Committee, I forwarded that information to you. So, uh, Mrs. Lowenstein, Lowenstein is on your list for, uh, consideration for the library board. That's the only new thing, uh, in a, in a reappointment for the retirement board. Those are the only new things that I knew before yesterday. But, but I believe you all have that, so I won't not, you know, don't belabor it. Keep going.
Absolutely. And, um, Clerk McCauser, I do have a question. Um, I was just going through my notes. Apologies for not touching base on line regarding it. Um, I, I do recall there was a thing on our Personal Appointments Committee agenda, um, or there was a meeting where there was, I think, a concern regarding the, the zoning. I believe it was the Zoning Board of Appeals that maybe we, we, uh, exit or we did not, um, we left a, a name off of voting. I, I have, because this is purely from recollection and I may be totally wrong here. Um, do you recall something to that effect with, with Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, not advancing, uh, or not, not putting somebody for a vote as of yet?
Right, the, uh, the chairman, and you, you all received this information, the chairman, Mr. Stevens, he requested that the alternate, um, um, be moved up, and I'm trying to remember his name.
Was it Doug Smith?
No, no. Moving Mr. Smith, a longtime member, up to the vacancy.
Right.
Yes, I, I do think that would be appropriate, and the beauty is I believe, uh, uh, Mr. Smith is an unaffiliated voter, therefore, uh, I, I know Zoning Board of Appeals, it, it's kind of the, uh, what it, um, we, we have to be careful with some of the appointments as we're getting, I believe, awfully close to, uh,
Yeah, we have minority representation.
Minority representation, that's correct. Yes, um, so, okay, so, um, all right, so that, thank you, thank you for that clarification. Um, is, is there any, anything else?
You do have, uh, James Dunne, Dunagan, uh, did apply to two boards and commissions, and, you know, he's an unaffiliated voter, uh, registered unaffiliated. So, you know, the communication went to the both parties. Um, I mean, not all three parties, so that's independent Democrat and Republican, and I haven't heard anything back. That was last week. Um, you know, to see if they have applicants that I'm not aware of. Uh, but otherwise, we don't have any other app, you know, for the Fair Rent Commission he was interested in, and, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, all right, so it, it's really purely the, the committee's discretion to, um, you know, choose to appoint him. Should we appoint him to a board or commit, then, or vote to appoint him, uh, recommend? Um, there's, he has no preference at this point.
No, he, he just put his name into both of those. Um, you know, he, he might, you know, he might be actually pretty good for the Ethics Commission. I mean, there's, you know, he's got a very good resume. Uh, you know, it's something, there's no rush. There's no threat of, of not making quorums for any of these, well, Fair Rent, it hasn't any business yet, so, although I heard rumored that there might be one. Although, what I was told is, that's out of the jurisdiction. It's Fair Rent means, if you, you know, there's a guideline on, on, you know, if you, if your landlord unfairly raises your rent, you know, then, then you gotta, you know, under the guidelines, not just because somebody moved, uh, moved, uh, the apartments into condos or something, you know? So, anyway, I, I haven't seen it. It hasn't come across my desk, um, for your committee, for that committee to, to, I haven't seen it, so. Anyway, as far as, um, your boards and commissions, you have, um, opening up the, uh, not the guidebook, say, um, yeah, how, the, uh, you were looking at Zoning Board of Appeals. Oh, that's great. Now, you're looking at the guidebook. Isn't that nice? That's the wrong book. You went town register. Using a phone isn't always the best, as we found out. I don't know, you all.
Sometimes.
Yeah, town register, where are you? Well, anyway, well, I'll get to it before, before long. I'll go back home to government and find out why that isn't there. I'll ask, I'll ask the IT guys tomorrow. Where is it? It's not under government. Where is it? It may just because I'm on a phone, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Nope, I don't see it. And I was gonna put one in here. I didn't. I was gonna put one in my packet.
All right.
Okay.
Well, so while, while we do that, why don't we get moving on, uh, just, um, on voting to recommend some of our applicants. So, we'll, we'll start from the top of the list, gentlemen, if that's our, all right with you.
Sounds good.
All right, um, so I, I will make a motion, uh, to appoint Douglas Smith, an unaffiliated voter, uh, to, as a, a, um, as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
McBride will second.
With the term expiring twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five, so moved.
Thank you.
McBride seconded.
Excellent. So, motion by Bum Gardner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? Um, as Clerk McCauser stated earlier, um, Mr. Smith has been a longtime member of this committee. Um, it is my understanding that he, uh, received the, uh, was, um, recommended for reappointment by the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Ed Stebbins. Um, active, uh, member, and obviously brings, uh, experience, and, um, by pointing him, we will not run afoul of the, um, minority representation statute. All right. Um, so, okay, all right, so, um, if there's no further, uh, discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstention? Motion carries unanimously three-zero-zero. Uh, congratulations, um, Mr. Smith. Um, and now the council, at our next council meeting, will, uh, take up the, uh, appointment. Uh, next on our list.
You don't have, you don't have a town council committee the whole meeting tonight?
No, no, uh, not, not until next week, uh, six-thirty.
It's a town council next.
Right, regular council with public comment. Have a good night. We had our, our resident trooper in the house tonight. Uh, no meeting tonight, of course, so. Pun fully intended. Um, all right, next on the list, we got an application for, uh, Mr., uh, James Jake Dunagan III. Um, I understand he has applied for, uh, or submitted an application to join not just the Fair Rent Commission, but also as.
Oh, you can only do one.
That's right, a- as an alternate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I apologize, the.
Fair Rent Commission. Fair Rent and. No, I thought you said good for that. He only applied for zoning, I mean, excuse me, yes, Zoning Board of Appeals. Wait a minute, planning and going, where is his application?
So, it's James Zoning Board of Appeals by one Fair Rent Commission.
Yeah. ZBA, yeah, ZBA and Fair Rent.
All right. Okay, so this is, um, so, the way I see, and, um, I, you know, just for, for starters, I, I do know, um, uh, Mr. Dunagan. I think his resume is very strong. Um, clearly interested in getting more involved in our municipality. Um, and has obviously demonstrated a understanding of, um, the many facets of our government. And so I, what we have to decide this evening, uh, gentlemen, is, uh, which board we choose to recommend him uh, to, as was mentioned, one of the upsides, assuming it's the zoning.
Yeah, you move.
Board of Appeals is that, um, while we do have an alter, alternate vacancy, um, he's also an unaffiliated voter, so we will, uh, would not be too concerned with the issue of minority representation again. Um, on the other end, I understand with the Fair Rent Commission, uh, there, as we, we've discussed in previous meetings, there is criteria that, um, Mr. Dunagan would have to meet in order to serve on that, uh, Fair Rent Commission. Um, so if he is a, for example, a renter or a landlord, he would, um, there are only, there's only one slot, uh, for each of, um, for, for the alternate and the regular member. So, uh, we can only have one voting, one regular member who is a landlord or renter, and one alternate who is either a landlord or landlord.
And we have those.
Um, and at this time, we have, um, the landlord position is filled by Danielle Thurl.
So he'd be the alternate.
So he would be applying for the alternate vacancy. Uh, any discussion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to appoint James Dunagan to the alternate member of the Fair Rent Commission for a period ending seven-one-twenty-three.
I'll, I'll second the motion, Bum Gardner. So moved by McBride, seconded by Bum Gardner. Any discussion? Would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. McBride?
Uh, just briefly, I think it would be a great starting point for him to serve as an alternate member, uh, so I would be supportive of, of that role first.
Excellent.
And he clearly has the extra experience.
Yes, yes, indeed. And I believe, as he's expressed in his application, he is a landlord here in Groton. Um, so he is, um, familiar with the, the issues of being a landlord, um, obviously, towards, uh, to bring that perspective to, to this commission. Um, and so, uh, a- any, any discussion, uh, councillor Westerville?
I'd just like to say, having read his resume, I, um, I think he's highly qualified for this, or even a number of other positions, but as a, uh, as an alternate for this, as, uh, councillor McBride said, I think it's a great start, um, to get into our town government.
Absolutely. Excellent. All right, so with that, um, I, I have nothing other, nothing further to, to share or discuss, um, but I, I will be supporting, um, uh, supporting the applicant for appointment, and I want to thank him for his interest in, uh, getting involved. Um, so with that, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of appointing, uh, Mr. Jake Dunagan to, as an alternate to the Fair Rent Commission, uh, with a term.
What's the term? Twenty-twenty-four, no, twenty-twenty-three, yeah, seventeen, your three years, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-three.
Twenty-three. The term expiring.
July twenty-three.
July one, twenty-twenty-three, so moved.
Aye. Aye.
Seven-twenty-three.
Motion carries unanimously three-zero-zero. Congratulations, Mr. Dunagan.
First hurdle.
First hurdle, all right. One, and one, one less application to worry about, well, tonight. Or two, I should say. Uh, next, um, we are moving on to, uh, the application for Jenna Lowenstein, uh, fifty East Shore Avenue in Groton Long Point. She's applying to serve on the library tur, library board with a term expiring twelve-thirty-one, twenty-four. Um, I will note, like Mr. Dunagan, um, Ms. Lowenstein has a very impressive resume, um, has demonstrated she's, you know, that active and engaged in, in, um, many of our uh, local organizations, obviously, the library of being a, um, a wonderful institution here in our community, serves not just Groton, but really functions as a, a regional resource for, for so many. Um, she is involved in, um, many working at local organization, serves on the DTC. Um, her spouse, uh, serves on the RTM as well, so the family has been involved at the local level. Um, and, um, she has, uh, really, I think, demonstrated that especially for a library board, that is a, a really close, uh, knit group that, um, does great work in our community, that, um, you know, has, has demonstrated she has the capacity to, uh, work collaboratively with, with those, um, uh, with that group. And the DTC also, uh, voted to, at the last Democratic Town Committee meeting, voted to recommend uh, her appointment, so she is also endorsed by the Groton DTC. Uh, so with that, I will make a motion to appoint Jenna Lowenstein. Uh, library store, which expires twelve-thirty-one, twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-four, so.
Second one.
Motion by Bum Gardner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion on the applicant?
Uh, the only discussion I would have is that this can, this candidate has significant amount of experience and really looking forward to her getting involved, uh, with the town, so looking forward to.
Likewise. Excellent. It's always good to see our GLP friends get involved in our, in our town government as well. Um, all right, so, uh, there, there's no further discussion unless, uh, councillor Westerville, do you have anything?
No, I'm quite satisfied.
All right, uh, so seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously three-zero-zero. Um, congratulations, uh, Ms. Lowenstein, on your recommendation. Next on the list, um, we have Robert DeVoe, Democrat of, uh, thirty-three Library Street. Um, uh, he's a, um, the Chair of the Fair Rent Commission and did apply, uh, for reappointment.
We did attend one of your meetings a while back.
But, yes, 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 and I do recall, now, this, this is.
It was before this term, I think.
Yes, and, and this kind of here and lies, come, some of the issue, the issues we have with the Fair Rent Commission is that seemingly many of them are landlords. And, yes.
He is a landlord?
Yes.
Ooh, I didn't know he was a landlord.
Yes, and we have, that, that spot is filled, and I just don't want to run afoul, run afoul of the law.
But you, but you can still have, oh, I don't know, let's, I, I thought I brought that. No, I didn't. Oh, you know, I did give you the, um, ordinance about that. Uh, does it say that you can't have people at large?
See that?
I, I don't know.
See, that, that's kind of the ambiguity of, of that, the ordinance.
Yeah.
Because it says there can only be one landlord who is a regular member or alternate.
Does it say that?
Yes.
Oh.
And renter. So then, therefore, does it mean that the only other people that can serve are, have to, homeowners, right, homeowners?
Homeowners, they have to be homeowners.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, or, or, I don't know. I don't know. It's interesting, because he's been on it forever.
I know. I know.
So maybe he was holding the, um.
Unless it, you know, how.
Landlord time. Yeah. I believe I had, had some interesting things happen with the boards and commissions over the years.
Even when you think you know every, right?
Well, now, somebody new will go, oh, they should all be the same date.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah. Uh, unless something's changed, and we can check with him, or you know for sure that he is still a landlord.
I do believe so.
All right.
I do believe so.
Well, then, if he's, if it's in violation of the statute, or not statute, it would be a town ordinance that created it, I recall. Uh, do I trust my, do I trust my, uh, phone to get into the codes? Let's see, government codes, let's see. Hmm. Yeah, town code, here we go. I can read it. We, our, our, we have our town codes online. I know you all know that, right? And you can search.
While you're looking for that, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Just for my own knowledge, um, if he is a landlord, would being part of this commission, if he were a landlord, say, in another town as opposed to Groton, or is he, you know, would that make any difference at all? I don't know where.
That is.
But.
Yes, yes, and, and out of respect to the, the applicant, I, I don't want to, um, get too, too much into his own personal life or personal finance, you know? Um, so we, we will.
Fine, I'm just, my, just my question is, would being a land, being a landlord in another town preclude him, uh, preclude him from being on this commission for the town of Groton?
At another town.
No, no.
So, I'll read this to you. Membership and officers, the Fair Rent Commission shall consist of five members, all of whom shall be resident electors of the town, and shall be comprised of one landlord member, one tenant member, and three citizen members. Not more than three of the members shall be registered members of the same political party. All members shall be appointed by the town council. For the purpose of this provision, the phrase citizen member means a resident elector of the town who is neither a tenant nor a landlord. In addition, the council shall, uh, shall appoint two resident electors who shall one, be one landlord and one tenant to serve as alternates, and then it goes on. How they're, you know, the staggering terms and so forth. So, yes, we have a problem.
So that is the words of the ordinance, not our own personal opinion, so do want to make that clear.
Well, so, so you could fix this by not appointing, um, Mr. Dunagan, or not recommending appointment of Mr. Dunagan to the Fair Rent Commission, because he would be taking a, a tenant position. I mean, a landlord position. And then you could have Mr., um, Du- DeVoe, who's been on forever, uh, back as the landlord, you know what I mean?
We could, we could do that, and we also, or we could, uh, simply appoint, point him to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And then, um, and then we could appoint Mr. DeVoe, who is, who is the chair.
Yeah.
Um, as the regu, okay.
I think that would fix your whole problem.
Uh, gentlemen, how do you feel about that?
Can you just explain it one more time clearly?
So, yeah, so, so the proposal, um, Clerk McCauser just shared, what, we, we could choose to, um, reverse the decision we just made to appoint or recommend the appointment of Mr. Dunagan to the Zoning Board of Appeals, I'm sorry, to the, um, to the Fair Rent Commission.
As a landlord.
Um, as, as a landlord, we could. Well, here.
No, no, it was, that was, that was, that's still an issue. That's an alternate position.
Yeah.
Erg. I think you don't have, I, I think you can't reappoint Mr. DeVoe, period.
And honestly, but here's the thing. It would not run afoul of any, uh, because as of now, even if we don't reappoint him, technically, they're still members.
Correct.
So they would just maintain status quo by doing nothing.
Right, that is true, that is true.
And I, as, as much as that, it undermines kind of this.
Well, I know.
Because we're kind of in a catch-twenty-two.
But you're, at some point, this committee should put on the agenda to talk about boards and commissions in general, which ones are good, which ones are not doing anything, and you know.
And workshop it.
And, and, yes.
In a public.
Yes, in a public meeting that, that's designed just to talk about that.
Yes. Um, and ideally in person, we can, I'll bring the pizza.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't take long. Yeah.
All right.
I would recommend we do nothing at this point, then, on that.
Yes, a- and, and to be clear, even if we do nothing, that will bear no impact on, um, Mr. Dunagan, because there's already an alternate vacancy for the landlord position.
That's right.
Understood.
All right, all right, so we, we will, we will choose to do nothing with, um, both, uh, applications for the Fair Rent Commission, actually.
It's just two, isn't it?
Uh, two, yes.
DeVoe and.
And, uh, Robert DeVoe Junior, uh, Gwen Depot, and Tay- Taylor Samuel.
Gwen Depot, oh, yeah. Yeah, twenty-one.
Yes.
Yeah, she's.
All right.
The best July she.
All right. All right, so we will, again, um, hunt. Rent mission, my goodness.
No, I'm glad that, uh.
But I'm glad we had the discussion.
Yeah, this is how things work out.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, so we will now move on to the Ethics Commission. Um, we do have three applications for the Ethics Commission. Um, and let's not talk it into existence, but, uh, I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, Clerk McCauser, the Ethics Commission, um, still has not, they have not taken any complaint before, they have not.
No, no, but if you, there's a reason for that.
Yeah.
Read the ordinance.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, we have, we have laws already in place. I don't, you know, the reason why we have an Ethics Commission is because the legislature demanded all towns adopt their own or take what the state has as their own, uh, ethics, uh, ordinance. And so the town put it in their, um, charter. The last, in two thousand and eight, the last charter revision, it was put in there. Uh, and so up until whenever, twenty sixteen, I guess it was appointed, I think, or, I don't even remember, twenty eighteen, I can't remember, all that time, those ten years, it was, you know, kicking it around, kicking it around, well, how should it be? Anyway, we have laws in place that, for employment, that you can't violate. So I don't under, I never understood why we'd have an ethics ordinance if it applies to boards and commissioners and employees. I don't get it, because, uh, you know, we're all covered under law. I don't know.
Yeah.
I know that there's been some violations, but I think they were taken care of, because there was already law.
Yes, 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 of course.
You know, the smart department and all that kind of stuff.
Yes.
You just, you can't do stuff.
No, you can't.
Sir.
Yes. And I, I presume there are also some things that will completely bypass the ethics process if.
It's too bad, because we have really good commissioners, uh, on the ethics, you know.
Yeah.
Not that we're wasting their talent, but we're wasting their talent, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Uh, but we need the F, we have to have it. Our charter states it, and the, and the state government deemed it, that every town will have one.
So again, and, so with thi- this commission in particular, so all of the folks up for reappointment are the only three standing members of the group. So at this stage of the game, I mean, almost simply, again, doing nothing as they're still standing members.
Yeah, but you still want to reappoint them. It's not, you know, you don't, you don't want to not reappoint people.
Okay, and I'm only saying, because we, we also, the, they are all members of the same party.
So, doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
Okay, all right. All right, so, um, with that, I will, um, make a motion to reappoint Sally Booth, Democrat, forty-six Pearl Street, Mystic, to the Ethics Commission with the term expiring eleven sixteen, twenty twenty-four.
Second, Westerville.
All right, moved by Bum Gardner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion?
Nothing.
Um, I, I do have a question, um, for, for the clerk, uh, just as far the, as far as the applications go. Um, I didn't know.
They don't come from, this, this one does, this is totally your thing. You wouldn't get them from the parties. Or the chair, there's, you know, or the chair. There's no chair.
So how do we know about them, the applicants?
Hasn't been any meeting, there's no, there's no way of, there's nothing to, to judge them on. So, in other words, your chairman would say, oh, they never come to meetings, I don't want to reappoint them, or they're a great participant, I want to reappoint them. We don't, we don't even have a chairman. They haven't had a meeting to elect a chairman. So, so there's no, you wouldn't be getting a reappointment from them, but it's just looks messy, so you should reappoint them.
Okay.
Especially when you get an applicant to, you know, when you get somebody that applies that wants to be on it.
All right. All right, and, and perhaps maybe we can, um, because I, I honestly, um, not terribly familiar with some of the applicants. Um, but nonetheless, there is a motion on the floor. But nonetheless, there is a motion on the floor. I made the motion. When Sally Booth, did I have a second?
Yep. Westerville.
Westerville, all right, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose abstention, motion carries unanimously three zero zero. Now on to the application for.
Gary Burford.
Gary Burford.
You can do all.
Do I have a motion?
McBride will make a motion for Gary Burford and Rachel Smith. The Ethics Commission.
We can do it.
Termites are eleven sixteen, two thousand twenty four.
All right. Moved by McBride. All second. Seconded by Bumgarner. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those indicate, all those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose abstention, motion carries unanimously three zero zero. Now on to the reappointment of Jason Pollard. Republican to retirement board. Term expiring twelve thirty one twenty twenty five. So.
Point of clarification, the recommendation for that board comes from the town manager.
So why are we voting on them?
No, the council has to appoint, but the.
Or Retirement Board.
The council appoints the retirement board, but it's recommended by the chair, and he's the chair.
Such or, or.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, so they have, interesting, okay, because I know, for example, for two of the, you have two boards, for example, Conservation Commission. As well as the Economic Development Commission.
Strictly.
Strictly.
There's five of them, there's five of them, yeah.
Okay.
And there's some that are strictly town council. There's a bunch that are strictly town council.
Strictly town council. More, you know.
Yeah.
All right. So I, I. Made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Westerville.
All right. Moved by.
You.
Bumgarner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion? All right, and just going through Mr. Pollard's resume here, this is. A reappointment, he has. Participated in meetings. He was not recommended by any particular committee. Political committee. He is a registered Republican. And. The term, would it be, would expire twelve thirty one twenty twenty five?
Yep.
And. Do you know, Madam Clerk, does he have background in finance?
You know, I think that he may have worked for the town. So you do have some people on there that either retired from the town. Or active with the town. And the town manager, that's how that board's mixed up, and we have one person that has to have finance background. I don't know if it's him or another person. I know that we used to have Mr. O'Brien, he was, he was our finance person. But I don't know who is now, maybe it's, maybe it is him.
And I.
I don't have his resume. It's.
I think he was involved in with real estate.
Real estate, okay.
Okay.
All right.
This, there probably is somebody on.
Well, he, he's clearly been a part of these, these meetings in the past and has contributed, so. I'm, I'm content with his wanting to reappoint him. And. Historically, that's a standard anyway, so. But nonetheless, any discussion? And did I have a second?
The guy seconded it.
That's right, all right. All right, if there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in, in favor indicate by saying aye, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose abstention, motion carries unanimously three zero zero. So that does complete.
Yeah, but I have a couple of things I forgot about telling you.
That does complete our business as far as. The appointments goes. And we do have an announcement.
Well, it's.
From our clerk.
It's a, it's a, it's a subject that. Goes to this committee, you, you, this committee recommended. Mr. Goodman. To be from alternate to a regular member.
Yes.
And. I don't know if you've had any information about that, but, but the. Historic District Commission has to have a specific criteria of membership. And one member has to be, have a background in historic. Buildings and so forth.
Short preservation. Well, I do recall this. This body did.
You knew that, you vetted that, I believe, during the, when you interviewed him.
I believe this body unanimously recommended.
I know, I know, but, but I'm really worried that there's going to be a problem with that commission if they don't. Well, he's an alternate, he is an alternate member. If he's, if he's sitting when they're discussing things, great. If he's not.
And because of, I believe, even some issues with quorum issues, he has been seated.
That's good, because when he is, when he is seating as a regular member, then there's no discrepancy. You know, I, I don't know if a port would ever say, well, it's a vacancy. I don't know if they'd ever say, well, shame on you, you know, Groton Historic District, you didn't, you don't have, you didn't recruit someone to fill this position. When you have somebody, an alternate that can sit that position as an alternate, you know what I mean? I don't know if it would matter.
Or, or that alternate that was, the application was, application for a regular member was rejected.
You know, that should have happened, but I don't understand why it did, but that's the way it goes. So maybe it'll come up again, I don't know.
So maybe, I mean, this is something that I think is worth, I'd be happy to discuss just through.
The town attorney actually should have. I can ask the town attorney to weigh in on it.
Absolutely.
And, and. Or you can, I mean, you have access to the town attorney. To me, this is something that needs to be addressed. I mean, you know.
Well, during our committee reports, I'm going to bring that up, that this was discussed. And that, you know, we.
I'll have that information before you're.
Excellent.
Before Tuesday.
And gentlemen, are you comfortable with asking, you know, seeking guidance from our town attorney on this matter?
I am, yes.
Yes.
Excellent, all right.
It has to. I know you, you all three were. For both making, making that request to our clerk.
As she is heavily involved in our personal unemployment process. There's.
I am the support for all of commissions.
So you're, get the green light to, to make that request. All right.
I'll copy you, I'll copy the committee on, on, so you see what's happening, and hopefully they'll respond all when we get. Information.
Excellent, thank you, Clerk McCauser. All right, is there anything else?
That was a big one.
Yes.
I'm sure there's something else.
So I, I, I don't believe we have any further business, and this does cover, we did. We did not have a meeting in December, so this.
Yeah, you made up for it.
Yes, we did make up for it, so we, we got, we're, we're back on. Back on target, no backlog, and. Yes, thank you to everyone for serving on our boards and commissions. And continue, you know, request that if you're interested in serving on one of our boards or commissions in our community. You reach out to the town clerk's office, submit an application, and then she'll get you started in that process and. You'll perhaps come before our committee for a vote and. Should you be recommended for appointment, be advanced to our council, and if the council approves, and you serve on our board of commission. Head over to the clerk's office, get sworn in. Nice little photo up. And we'll be on, be on with the town business, so thank you again, and any, anything else, gentlemen?
I think I'm good, thank you.
All right. I'll sit here, thank you.
Thank you for your participation, as always, in your service to this committee, and with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Second, all right, moved by Counsel Westerville. Seconded by Counsel McBride. All those in favor of adjournment, indicate, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed extensions, motion carries unanimously three zero zero. Thank you, and good night.
Good night, everyone.
Take care.
See you.